I'd like to call the city council study session to order. Joanna, would you call the real please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor from town Carol Gage.
Here.
Councilmember Snetsiger. Councilmember Mollicat.
Here.
Councilmember Wayne Gage.
Here.
Councilmember Brown with the absence. Councilmember Carrick.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Winnicky.
Here.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda is the telephone town hall.
Now, I'll just introduce this by saying that we have had some interest expressed on the part of several members of the council in a telephone town hall. This was done by Adams County and now, I think, also Westminster. And so, we put some money in the budget this year to accommodate this and wanted to have a presentation to the council to make sure that you're aware of what it really is and how it works and everything, and make sure that you're interested in pursuing telephone town hall. Kurt Servini with the company called Telephone Town Hall is, we've asked him to make a presentation, not endorsing him or his services, but wanted the council to hear from him because he's very knowledgeable, honestly, in how this works.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Servi and thank you for having me. Sorry the big screen doesn't work, but we can work around that. I'm going to do two things today to try and describe what we do. We have a video and if you can, at least the sound on it, you might be able to see it from where it's going to be situated and at least explain a little bit of how we go about this. But most importantly, when you do a telephone town hall, you're trying to get a lot of different things done. It's good for community outreach, but you can do, you can ask people to vote on different things. That could be a goal. You can have different polls in the call as well. And besides that, you can try to gather more email addresses. Obviously, the outreach is a very important aspect of it one way or the other. And you get some input basically from people that are never going to show up at one of these meetings. Basically, I have a friend of mine, Lee Feldman. He's the city manager of Fort Lauderdale. Been doing business with him for years. What he said, he said, "Kurt, 80% of the people are never going to really get that involved in one of, in the town halls. You've got 20% that are active one way or the other. These are the people that are going to be home that you get involved in the telephone town hall." So, one of the objectives is getting those people that are never going to get in their car and come down here, one way or the other. They last an hour and one of the first things, and so let me try this video first and hopefully you can hear it. And then I'm going to show you again what the platform works right after that. I won't take up too much of your time on this.
Good gentleman. I'm going to give you a quick walk through of how telephone town hall works. We initiate the town hall with an outgoing message. You can see as I'll progress bar here. Those who answer our outbound call to your brief message telling them why we're calling and then they automatically join the forum in progress. If they don't answer a live call, we'll give a voice message telling them join by dialing a toll-free inbound participant line. Use this voicemail message to promote your website, look at upcoming events, or advocate on behalf of your organization. Event statistics update live during your event right here. A TTHM moderator tells folks how to participate, then introduces your primary host. The host lists the framework for our discussion and introduces any speakers. Meanwhile, our TTHM screeners interview and organize callers with questions or comments, forwarding them to a speaker queue with a detailed question summary. The moderator then brings participants live one at a time for interactive Q and A. Your staff tells us which questions to take and in which order through the staff chat. Our screeners and moderator make sure there are no surprises, vetting each caller and controlling what they need to speak live so that we will give the best, most topical questions. We use this real-time polling feature to get feedback from the audience. You can also use this feature to tag participants who want future contacts, who are going to attend an upcoming event, or who would like to volunteer or advocate on your behalf. TTHM provides detailed reports and event statistics after the call. You'll also get a high-quality recording of the entire forum. Contact us for a free demo of the whole service approach we use at TTHM. Even if you're not planning the whole telephone town hall meeting right away, we'd love to give you a live demonstration of this powerful technology. We're telephone town hall meeting.
That's my son. He put this together because he figured he could say it better than I. What we, I had not brought up a couple of other things. You might promote upcoming events. Survey questions are very important from your audience as well. Some cities do three to five survey questions just to get a feel for what people are thinking. Gosh, I do some where we probably do public service announcements during the call to say, "This is coming up this Saturday. This is coming up this Tuesday." We also mentioned that even the voicemail leave behind that we do as well. Let me get out of this. Thank you. Now, what we do as well on these, let me get back to where it was. I'm going to get to the demo platform next. Any questions so far?
Yes. When you said the email, how are you collecting the email address? Is that when people come in or how are you gathering that information?
I'm going to show you that. That's a great question and I'm going to show you how we do this in this demo, which I'm going to dial up and explain to you. I'm going to call a couple of my employees during the call to answer your question. I, as the moderator, and I act as the moderator on a lot of these calls, I'll say, "Please, if you want to provide us your email address so we can keep you up to date with city managers, press seven. Seven on the keypad on your phone." When they press seven, they automatically go to a person who just collects emails. Different than, please press zero. Zero on the keypad on your phone if you want to provide us your, if you want to ask a question. And those people, once we get to them, ask the questions live. Now, go ahead.
Well, no, so I get that. I'm then, so the voicemail leave behind, is that something in advance to advertise the call or is it after the fact to recap?
It's the 50% of the people that are going to get the voicemail instead of picking up the phone and going live.
Oh, okay. So, it's a lot that don't answer or whatever.
So, this is so-and-so from such-and-such. Sorry we missed you. Here's a toll-free number if you're just getting this call. Otherwise, we're, because we're having a telephone town hall right now, please join us. Otherwise, we have a picnic in the park coming up Saturday and go to our website for more information. That's what your voicemail might say, something to that effect. You always should use your voicemail to a total advantage of trying to get people to circle back into the call or at least go to the website or drive them to an event. Every touch you have, you should, you know, make it work as well as you possibly can for yourself. What else is I going to say? People have the option, it's not just a pure calling them and that's how you get hold them. They have the option to actually call in, correct, beforehand? They do, but the vast majority of people on these calls are going to be ones picking up the phone. 95% of the people to 98%. I've got a quick story for you. I did the city of Austin the first time. They didn't want to bother their people, so they invested $10,000 to invest in having people call in on the toll-free number. 75 people is what they got. Now, we do calls for the city of Austin and we don't even charge them $10,000 and they reach, you know, 50, 60,000 people. So, it's just the numbers are, people are creatures of habit. "Oh darn it, 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock. I missed the call. Oh, well, you know, what can I tell you?" Let me, let me put this in. Two, two, four, three. Is everybody, is everybody where they're supposed to be, I wonder? This is what a screen looks like. Mind you, this is very similar to talk radio on the phone. The only difference is we turn on the dial by calling them for the most part. That's turning the dial on in your car. This is what this really is. It's talk radio on the phone. If you ever went on talk radio like a sports talk program, you call up, the engineer will say, "What do you want to talk about?" And then they type it up and so the talent sees what they're getting into. We do the same thing one way or the other if we can. We always do. And what we try to do is, we try to take as many questions in as we possibly can on these things during the course of a call. You'll probably get to about 20 questions that come in if you can, if you can get to it, even if you've got multiple people answering the call. Usually, you direct the question. When I do this in Westminster, it usually goes to the mayor first and the mayor then hands off and points and rotates it through all city councils to answer the questions. That's how it's usually done and it works out, you know, pretty well that way. Everybody agrees it should, you know, always go that way.
Can all the people, can all the members of the council and all the people who are listening hear all of the questions and answers or is that just, you know, if your question have to depict and you're talking to a council member, it's just the two of you talking?
No, we'll get the rig set up and I'll get here a day ahead of time to set it up if we have to and do a better job of communication, communicating with your poor communications person that set this up.
Marcy had a question also.
But the answer is, is that everybody in the room can hear it. All right? They can hear the whole thing. I don't think you need to put the screen up on the thing because a couple, a couple of times people have a tendency to look at the screen and try and see ahead as opposed to just answering the question. So, it's more like that. You got another question?
So, if we only, let's say we only got to 20 questions, but we had 50 questions, do you have a log of who asked and can we follow up with them after the town hall to answer their questions? Because I, we feel right even the questions unanswered.
A couple of things about that. First of all, any question that comes into the log, you could follow up with answering questions. The way towards the end of the event, I usually go, not everybody does want their question answered, so towards the end of the call, what I usually say is, "We're sorry we couldn't get to every question. If you'd leave us a voicemail at the end, that'd be great, but we'd really prefer your email address to get back to you as a, but if you want us to call you back, we can. So, we need your name, your phone number, and your email address so we have a good chance of getting back to you." So, if we don't get to every question at the end, that's how we handle it. Even if questions are logged up, people have to be aggressive enough to, you know, want the que, not everybody wants a call back, we found. So, they leave a voicemail message instead for it. Does that answer your question?
It answers my question. My only thought is, you know, we have a lot of seniors who might not have emails and they might not understand the step of waiting till the end to re-ask the question and put it into the voicemail queue. So, I guess my preference would be that we have it set up so that we can follow up with them. If they don't want to talk to us, we'll follow up and...
And that's an internal choice you can make if you want because you're going to get reports with that, with the phone number the next day. If you want your staff to do that, that is possible to do. So, anyway, I'm going to launch this call and...
Excuse me. Leslie has a question. I'm sorry. I've got three more now. I'm sorry. Maybe after you do your demo, I'll be able to...
No, no, no. Go ahead.
But my question is, is this where we all are on the phone at our own homes as well or do we have like a, like we've done webinar, I've done webinars before where we have a screen that you can look at and when a question comes in, you know, you can, you know, ask who's best to answer this or anything like that. Are we going to have something like that rather than just, you know, us trying to figure out who's the best to answer the question? Is there any kind of visual display that we can use?
If you guys determine that you want to put this dashboard up there and look at it, you can. Okay? To see what's coming, one way or the other. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah. One was just to kind of delegate who, who should answer the questions, you know, what kind of a thing, when questions come in. And so, that was one question is how we would monitor that rather than just kind of toss them out for someone.
You have to have, you have to have a chooser internally. Two things. Somebody online is going to tell me what questions they want to take. Somebody answering the questions here. One of your staff will probably say, and they're going to, and I'm going to show you how that works in a second, who to take. Okay? So, I'm going to move them up to the top and then it's going to go, then the question's going to come up to the, and then the mayor decides, points in direction who should answer the question one way or the other. It's easiest way to do it. But I would say in, the staff internally probably should determine the questions of what to take because you're going to be busy trying to answer questions and it's hard to do both. And then the other thing is, is that not all questions will be asked from people live from the audience. The staff will come up with probably five or six canned questions to make sure that we can cover all the bases that we're, of what we were trying to get done that night. Because sometimes the audience just plain won't ask the question you really wanted to, to cover what you wanted to cover. So, that's how we do that too.
So, logistically, we would all be in one room.
Right.
So, like in the city manager room where the conference call unit is, is that...
This room works as an example. This room works. Like I said, I'll do a better communication with your IT guy and make sure that this thing works.
And my other question would be, you know, so anybody who's on a do not call list obviously gets scraped off of this, correct?
They do.
Okay. Good.
They do. Okay. This is how we're, what's happening here is, is that this will be coming up in just a second. I think you guys can probably hear me. I usually start off a call like this. I go, "Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. We really appreciate you joining us for this demo. We're going to be on for the next couple of minutes to show how the system works. If you have a question, please press zero. Zero on the keypad on your phone, zero if you have a question. If you want to provide us your email address, please press seven. That's seven on the keypad on your phone. Seven if you want to provide us your email address so we can give you updates from time to time." So, zero for questions, seven for email addresses. And so then what happens is, is that we try to, some questions are going to come up and I'll show you how they come on this dashboard right away if I can. Here is what the screen looks like. I'm just going to walk it right along. And you can see on this dashboard, this is kind of like the control room as it were of this job. You can see we have a question already and we're pressing. And this is what we work from one way or the other. Now, this whole thing, we fill up with questions and some even below the whole thing one way or the other. So, this is what a dashboard looks like, one way or the other. I'm going to show for the camera too what happened right here. So, anyway, for anybody that's watching this, this is what the dashboard looks like right here. Got it? Cool. So, anyway, on that particular dashboard, I would be talking with one of your people in that little box that was right here, back and forth. That's how we talk without saying something over the air. That's our little control box. And they tell me, "Well, I've got two possibilities. I can take Preston or I can take Diane." I've got to take Preston first, even though I wasn't told to because he's from Westminster and that's right next door. So, this is how a question go. So, anyway, where were we? I was doing the introduction. The mayor does some introductory remarks. Everybody in the council says hi and who they are. Okay? And then you go to questions after that. So, again, I start off for a couple of minutes while people are getting on the call. Mayor, everybody else has a couple of minutes worth of remarks and then we go to questions. The first question could be read over the air. It could be live over the air. Doesn't really matter one way or the other as long as we're getting all the bases covered. So, the first question's from Preston today. Preston, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Preston, where are you from and what's your question, please?
I'm from Westminster, Colorado, and my question is, how is your favorite basketball team doing this season?
That wouldn't have anything to do with Denver, I'm sure. But anyway, so when he has, when he has asked this question, what I have done is I brought him live and then I muted him. The whole idea when somebody asks a question, the way these run the best, is somebody asks a question and after that, they're done. We could go back to Preston if need be, but 98% of the time you don't because we don't want banter back and forth. Then somebody would point and answer the que, you know, the mayor points and you answer the question accordingly. Somebody else might pipe in and say, "Well, I've got something to say about that." Anytime anybody says anything, because we're doing this on the phone, the big deal is to always say who you are. I don't have to say who I am because nobody cares, but they do care about everybody else in this room on who's saying what and all that kind of stuff to make sure they can identify the answer with a person. So, anyway, let me go to the next one. Diane, go off track if you were. Diane, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Diane, where are you from and what's your question, please?
Hi, I'm from Golden, Colorado, and we have a really bad hot bull problem on our street. We've called three times and it's...
Diane, we're trying to keep questions focused on the weather. What was your question again, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. What's the weather where you are today?
The point is, if they start rambling on and they don't get asked a question or whatever, I can gently cut in. It wouldn't be that abrupt. The point is, I want to show you I could do it and we can get them back on track one way or the other. The number one reason I usually will cut in is because somebody just keeps thinking that this is their own personal call and everybody else has to listen. So, I'll gently go in and I'll say, "We have a lot of questions behind you. What was your question again, please?" And they still don't answer it and I bring them back and then I'll stop and I'll say, "Mayor, what do you think about what Diane was saying?" And then we just kind of take it from there, one way or the other. But, you know, people, a lot of times when I do these, people are always saying, "Well, gosh darn it. What happens if somebody does?" And then that's why you have a moderator. They cut it off at the pass if you can, one way or the other. We also, on one of these questions, we can do, we can do polling questions and I'm going to do one tonight. Will the Broncos repeat in their division? If the answer is yes, press one. If the answer is no, press two. And if you're not sure, press three. Go ahead and vote. We know you're there. Press away. And so, what happens is, is a polling question came in. We've already answered all the questions. But a polling question came in and you can see the voting comes in right away on one way or the other. So, it's live voting now. If you choose to during one of these calls, what happens is, is that you... You, your staff decides on whether you're going to comment on it. It might be what's the most important issue in the city. Press one if it's this, two if it's this, three if it's this, four if it's this, five if it's this. You get up to five. If you decide you want me to reveal the results, I can. And then I'll say, "Why don't you comment on it? Or what you thought the, what you thought the results were all about." So, you get that option if you want to. However, I will not reveal results unless I'm told I can. It's not something I do. Your staff controls who to take, when to take them, polling questions, any public service announcements I make and all that. I work with them in advance. This isn't mine. I'm just the moderator. That's all I am. I talk, unlike right now, less than 5% of the entire call. Most of this is all you guys talking. Very little from questions from the audience either. This is yours. This is your radio show on telephones. So, any other questions right now?
Can you capture the questions being asked or can somebody type them in so if we wanted to have an FAQ later on to do an article or anything like that, is that possible?
In the reports that we pull down for you overnight, a couple of things are going to happen. You're going to get some reports that basically are in sales spreadsheet. You can tell how long people have been on, how they answered questions and all that. You're also going to get a PDF report. Those will have the questions in there that you were asking about earlier, all ready and ready to go. Who they were, what their phone number is and all that. And by the way, we ask who the person is on the call. Just because it went to a certain household, we actually ask who is on that call. We don't say it's, you know, my, I don't know what my phone record would say. Would it be Kurt Servini or Diane Servini? But we find out which one it is and it may sound kind of silly, but if they didn't go in the ear, you want to know who you're talking to. So, that's why we, we put in what we do. So, the answer is yes, you could do that in the, after the fact. The other thing that you might want to consider doing is we are going to record this entire event and if you choose to, you can put an edited version on your website and tell people, you know, "If you miss this, you can always go to the website. We'll hold that six months out for you. We'll, we'll hold the, we'll hold the data, the audio out there for you and then they can just click on it and listen to it accordingly, one way or the other." And again, the other thing you're going to get is a bunch of voicemail audio clips. And in those voicemail audio clips are going to be the things that you were concerned about, not just the questions that came in that you saw that came in on the reports, but some people will leave messages and have questions that didn't press zero. So, we'll get them as well on the thing. And we'll offer them, again, as I get towards the end of the call, say, "Sorry we couldn't get to everybody. Really apologize. Tried to." If you have a question, whether you press zero or not, please leave us a voicemail at the end. We need your name, your phone number, and your email address if you can. And that's how we cover that particular base.
So, on the recording, is it posted in your system or is it a file that you provide our communications for our own website?
You can do it either way. Either way.
I have a couple of questions. First question is, so it's saying here that residents can sign up to participate and so if it's a cell phone, they can sign up and you can call that cell phone as long as they've signed up. Is that correct or no?
That is correct. In other words, if you want to and you choose to, you can create a landing page early on and promote this and say, "Please sign up for it." Don't put out the toll-free number for people to dial up. Remember Austin. Do create a landing page with your IT department that they sign up ahead of time and that we will put those in the call and front-end load them. And we will dedupe to make sure we're not calling them twice. The system automatically dedups. Now, we could call their cell phone and their home phone. It's not a perfect world, but that's about as off as we get when we're...
And then the second question is, what time of day for these town halls have you seen that they're most successful?
6:00, 6:30 or 7:00.
Okay.
What time do you start your meetings?
Today's 6:00. Our regular meetings are 7:00.
Any of the times are fine. Sometimes they, I do some cities where they actually do one of these and they do it with their physical town hall meeting and the front end is an hour and it's done like this and they cover the agenda that way. It's one in the same. It's not a separate, a separate thing of communication. They have their regular monthly meeting and they, they do this like that. They have people live in the room and sometimes they come up to a mic and ask a question as well.
And then I have a question. Mayor, Gene, I know you guys have been on council the longest. Have we ever participated or done live town hall meetings where, you know, I know we do our award meetings, but never a citywide town hall?
Never have.
Never? Was it ever discussed in previous councils?
No. No.
The difference in a physical town hall meeting as compared to a telephone town hall meeting, and this isn't a sales point, it's a numbers game. The people you're going to get on this are the people that are not going to come down for a physical town hall meeting. It's a, it's a different kind of market and you keep it, you know, some people ask me, "Well, why don't we do some sort of presentation where they can log in and stuff like that?" That's not your market. Your market is much more passive than it is for the people that are physically going to come down and are much more engaged.
Well, and I only ask that just because maybe I wonder if you can balance it, you know, maybe we do one, you know, mobile town hall and one live. Try it out. I'm not sure. I just never know if it was done or not.
No, we hadn't and I had heard of this through the Westminster city council. Thought it was a great idea to reach out to our community, so that's why I brought it forward.
I have an idea for your live, your live one. You can have your cake and eat it too. You do this one a month or two in advance and you promote the fact that you're doing a live one coming up a month down the road as a public service announcement, one way or the other. It will indeed drive attendance. Of course, you might want just a month out, not too, too far, but something where you have this so you can drive more people to that. By the way, we're going to be having on on April such and such, we're going to be having a physical town hall meeting. If you want to come down and say howdy, it's going to be at this location. It's going to start at seven o'clock. Hope to see you all there. So you could do that as well. In your voicemail as well, besides the public service announcement during the meeting. Again, reaching that audience where 50% of the calls went to voicemail, why not use that to promote something coming up in 30 days?
I'm kind of surprised that you get the kind of participation that you're talking about when it's really essentially a cold call to people, isn't it, if I'm understanding correctly?
You can make it that way. A couple, it is and they pick it up. Some city, some places on smaller calls, you can do this if you want. You can do a call two days in advance and say, by the way, this is so-and-so from such and such. Thursday at seven o'clock, we're going to have a telephone town hall meeting. Just pick up your phone and join us. And so you can give them a heads up it works. I never suggest that for politicians because actually they'll get less participation. But for cities, it works out quite well. We've tested it one way or the other. We split the list half and half, a big list, 25,000 we gave a pre-call to, 25,000 we didn't. We had a much better response on the regular call. But for cities, it might be an idea. It's not going to add that much to the overall cost, maybe 300, 400 bucks. So that would make it less cold, as it were. Something to that effect.
So you thought less people? You thought there'd be less people than 100 to 250 when you when you got cold calls? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, it's because the, I can't remember. You said
Five thousand pickups and then actually people on 100 to 250, which that seems high to me too. And I kind of did the math backwards and stuff. I figured you're kind of paying about $5 to $14 per phone.
Because a lot of people nowadays don't even answer their phones.
They will. They will on your caller ID if you put the city of Northland down. One thing you, in school districts, you put the city, you put the school district down. A lot of them pick up because their parents will say, what did little Johnny do now? But they will pick up if it has a city on it at night and use the ID for this place.
So we'll put IRS on there.
They definitely won't pick up that.
You're going to have to call the hospital up in advance, warn them too, for all the heart attacks that are going to be suffered in the city.
Well, and Mayor, I know the county, I think, did this as well.
Yes, they did.
I think the council called into that or, and so I don't know if
Yeah, we did that call.
You guys did that call as well?
We did.
Do you remember how many people called into that? Because I thought it was a really high number from what I
That called in or we
Or that was participating in in the call?
Seventeen percent of live, of of all the pickups participate. So let's say you had 10,000, you connected to 7,000, 17% of those would participate, which would put out about 1,000, something like that. That's just a guess. But it's generally about 17, 18% of all the connected calls. And a connection means it's either voicemail or they or or they picked it up or they blocked it. That's what a connected call means.
So 17% of 5,000 would be roughly 80? Is that right?
No, 10% would be 500 and and 7% on top is 850.
850?
Yeah.
So you think we can get 850 out of this call?
Well, especially if you do, you do his pre-call ID.
That's just a question.
No, I'm not kidding. It will help, it'll help with your pickup rate. It's a, yeah. So, yeah, something like that. You'll do fine. It depends, you know, it just depends. And how you market it and advertise it and you send out. If you have an email list and saying, by the way, we're going to do this, you probably have an email list and, you know, you market it on a phone machine, you plug it along. Yeah, you should get that, you can get that many. It'll, it won't stay that high. It'll peak out that, you know, go up and down this bell curve. Your first, after about the first 15 minutes, it goes down, down, down. But you'll get some hardcore, a couple hundred, 150, 200, it'll stay on until the bitter end. Send them all T-shirts and say, I survived an hour.
So you do see the drop rate that you get on the call?
What happens is, to answer your question very, very definitively, you call out, okay? And then people are hanging up and staying on. And then you have no more numbers to call. So then it starts dropping off and that's why. So Pete, you're going to have an average listenership of five, six minutes, something like that, five minutes on the average. Those are people that hang up right away, the people that stay on the end, but that's what we'll probably average out too.
But you actually, do you actually get the data that
Oh, it comes on your reports. It does. It does. I have a quick story for you. I did a, when I was first starting this back in '09, I had a candidate on the call and he bragged that his mother was on the call the whole time. And I said, what's her phone number? I looked it up. She was only on five minutes and I did not have the heart to tell him. So, and you get some silly things, you get some silly situations too. We keep everything under control pretty well. Every once in a while, I called one guy, one, I was bringing on one guy, this was up in Canada, and and I got the wife and 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 he says, she says, Bill, you're on, I can hear him! And I heard the whoosh. So I muted and I went to the next one. I said, obviously, we've got to take the next caller. There's all sorts of some stuff that could happen. Some of it's absolutely hilarious. You rarely, rarely anybody swears. If they even start getting there, I got it. So I can feel it. You can feel it coming. And it, people don't do that on these parks. Maybe in LA, but not here. Cell central. Something like that. Any other questions?
I have a question in the budget time application. It says, due to federal law, these numbers will not include cell phones. You just mean the numbers that we're going to have that people are dialing into, right? Or what is that?
We're not calling people on their cellphone unless they signed up on that landing page.
All right. Well, it just didn't make sense because the sentence before was talking about the phone number used in the call.
I'm not going to get you or us in trouble.
Got it.
Right now, we're, we just, if a RU Republican on our affiliate list comes out, a voter list, 80% of the call, you can still call 20%, you can. Democrats is about 65%. So all of us guys in our business decided to go back to the Fed and say, hey, there's a lot of people, especially young people and poor people, that are being underserved here. And, you know, we had our lawyers go up there and all that. Then the Obama team decided, hey, wait a minute, we're really getting underserved here. We're only getting 65% of our people called. So now they're in front of the suit against the Fed. So to see if we can call cell phones in certain situations because we are redlining poor people and young people. That's our story and we're sticking to it.
Any other questions?
Do you have anything else to share with us?
No, but I gave you, if you can share whatever. I brought a couple of sticks and they have this video and another video on it and a price list and every other gosh darn thing on it. So help yourself. It's, there's a lot of stuff on it. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for coming and sharing this.
I appreciate it.
Are your fees based on the number of calls made or the number of calls that stay on or what?
That connect. They either pick up the phone, they block it, or it goes to voicemail. In other words, if it's a bad phone number, you don't get charged for it.
The fact that you don't get charged for the fact that you called it?
Correct.
It's not one of the numbers. I mean
My my fee for a telephone town hall is based on whether they they either picked up the phone, they blocked it, or it went to voicemail. Not if it was busy, no answer, wrong phone number, fax machine. That's what you don't get charged for.
So if the phone is picked up in any way, that's
That's a connection.
Okay, that's how it's based.
Correct.
And if they hang up, it's still one call. If they stay on, it's still one call.
That's correct.
So the 1,400 that's here in the budget, where does that number come from? It doesn't match anything in your table in the back.
I think it's the one to two events per year, 1,000 to 5,000.
So the email, the invites, all of that, the voicemail, all of that is included in that fee?
Yeah, the reason it was rounded up from 1369 to 1,400 is because there's a little bit of toll-free involved in this call of people that actually use that toll-free and that's where the extra $31 came in from. There's also the need for an acquisition of a list in the first place if you don't have one. Don't get it from the, anything but somebody that pens and keeps up-to-date lists. And that is, that would probably cost you, if it's 5,000, about an extra $250 as far as getting the list. But you only need it once, it'll be good for a couple of years realistically. And then if you did your advance call, that would cost it approximately another $250 for an advance call. So those are the only other things that you would face, one way or the other. Kind of an a la carte way of looking at it.
Anything else?
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Judge. How are you? Good to see you. And this is concerning courtroom security.
Yes, thank you all for taking the time to hear from me. I I requested a meeting with City Council to discuss with you, to start the conversation about courtroom security. This was something that I had put on my, about a year, being Northland, to kind of reevaluate. And then we recently had a threat to the court and that has pushed it up to the top of my priority list to come speak with you. I'd be happy to answer questions about the threat. Basically, the summary is, we received a threat and the person received charges, felony charges in Adams County. And that case is now pursuing through the the justice system up in Adams County. However, it's got us to look at, you know, are the people that are coming into the courtroom safe? We don't have security right now. After we received the threat, the police department had come in and volunteered to bring in police officers for about five sessions at the court. And I can tell you that just based on having a police officer in the court, I feel, court staff has felt safer. I feel like the the people have been more respectful. You know, this isn't about me asking for court security because I need help controlling the courtroom. I think as a judge, I'm pretty good at controlling the courtroom. It is that sort of irrational response to to something. So this threat had arose out of me imposing a $200 fine. And so it's, this isn't, you know, a case of me sentencing someone to jail for six months in which he lost his job and, you know, these kind of things. And so I think that it's time now for City Council and for the court to kind of look at, how do we plan for that irrational person? And how do we, in the time that we live in, I think there needs to be steps. My understanding is that they've had issues in the past. It has never been presented to council. So it's not just, we have a new judge who can't handle this issue. I think it's been an issue before. And so I'm bringing it to you. You know, the the reason why I think we need security is, Northland Court isn't just a court that is traffic cases. We have some pretty serious cases that come in. Just last week, we had someone that had a really long rap sheet, had hit someone over the head with a bottle, probably could have been filed as a felony. Those are the kind of assault cases we have. We also have juvenile cases, some of which the kids are suspected of being in gangs. We have a lot of, you know, vicious dog cases. Those can be very emotional when the victims come in and the and the defendants are in the courtroom. All of those kind of cases are here in Northland. The procedure that we were following before is if we've kind of, if we felt, I have a panic button up there. I've never had to use the panic button except for when I accidentally hit it once. But they, we would call over and ask the the police officers to come in and report. And so that's dependent on if the police officers are available. They would always do their best to come in and and respond as quickly as possible. But sometimes we'd have to wait because it wouldn't be urgent. You know, it wouldn't be something that, and while we're in the same building as the police department, they still have to come over if there's something that we really need help with. And so I, like I said in my memo, I feel like I assume a certain amount of risk being a judge. But it's the people in the courtroom. I don't think that the person that gets in an accident on the highway that's coming to pay their ticket assumes the same risk as me. And so I think that there needs to be some sort of plan in place. And and that's where, I guess, the conversation will begin. You know, we did a little bit of research about what other courtrooms do. We emailed out to ask them. It's across the board of how they handle it. Some people don't have security. Some use a private agency. Some use their police department. Some use off-duty police officers. Those are all kind of the run the gamut. And I guess I would just say that I think that this is not just a court issue, but a risk issue for the city. And so I think that's why it's not just a budget that would come out of court, but come out of sort of the city. We have talked to Chief May. He's here if you would like to ask him any questions. The off-duty police officer is $48 an hour. We're in court five days a month. So if you're, if my math is right, that would be about $2,000 a month. That would need to be budgeted for an expense to use an off-duty police officer. The other option would be to sort of hire a police officer that would maybe share duties but be specifically assigned to the court on court days. Then the other option would be an outside agency. We are raising fines. That's in the process with our new tickets. Those are going to be implemented within about a week, I think, is when we're going to go live. So I think that there will probably be money in the budget through the court, but in the short term, we don't know how that's all going to shake out with the increase in fines. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have about the case or about courtroom security or what we're looking for. Anyone?
Did that person that caused a threat, I mean, did they physically try to approach you or?
No. So he called in a threat and then he wrote it down. But it was a threat about, remember Tom Clements, the person that was killed at his home through the Department of Corrections? A statement about there was nowhere to hide and whatever you take from me, I'll take from you. And so it was not just called. And this is a person that has been calling, kind of ranting to the court, which I think is something, you know, people do. We know how to deal with it in court. But when someone starts to make sort of those physical threats, you don't know if it's just someone spouting off or if it's going to be someone that comes into the courtroom with a weapon. And that's, I think, the the risk here is that once we have someone's irrational response to something like a fine, we can't plan around it. You can't say, well, you know, maybe he is just making threats or maybe he'll come in with a weapon. We don't know. And I think it's, with the type of cases in Northland, I think there needs to be courtroom security. I thought it when I first came in, but I thought, we are changing so much, I'm not going to go to council and propose this. But I think it's good timing now to kind of talk about it.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
Judge, I am 100% on board behind this. I mean, I I feel bad that this even happened in the first place. Whatever we need to do, I think, to to make you feel more secure and make your courtroom feel more secure
Thank you.
I'm all about. I'm going through the list of the the cities that you provided and kind of what they do for their security. And the majority of them have some type of metal detector or weapons detector. Do you feel like that's something appropriate that that you would want? To me, I, you know, having a police officer in here obviously is important, but making sure nothing even makes its way in here.
I mean, ideally, you know, it's a balance of where would where would it go? And I think that's the the trade-off. So, you know, I don't know if the Chief May could talk about how it would would happen. Obviously, the the best option would be to have someone come in, make sure that they don't have any weapons and have a security available. But, you know, if that's when a new courthouse is built and that's down the long-term plan, you know, like I said in my memo, I'm not a security expert. I just know what's happening now isn't sufficient, so.
What are your hours of court? What are the hours of the day?
It's usually from eight. And I would say we budget, you know, we're saying eight to five, but I would say it doesn't usually go till five. We have had days where we go to five. But I would say usually we're, we have a 2:15 docket, depending on how long that takes. We're usually done by like four-ish.
I mean, my thought is that, I mean, I had two, two ways you could work it maybe. But if we had, if we brought in another officer, then they could work the schools in the morning before you opened up court. And just rotate around between schools and then come in, work there. But then by the time they get out of here, schools are already out. And that was my thought. And the other one was just move the chief and office in here.
That's right. Well, the chief and I talked about his staffing concerns on himself.
I think, you know, just to answer the first question on the metal detector, I can tell you with the new facility, I think that's essential to have that in. It'd be very difficult to retrofit this building with that kind of system that you see at the county courts or some of the newer police departments that have those, you know, it's for council too, you know, the council too. You know, this, as you guys know, this, the security problem in this room has always troubled me, but
What about a wand, Chief?
We have those available, but, you know, to make sure, you know, when we have court days, it would be really difficult to have that in place. I mean, if we, if my officers are are here and they see someone, they're acting, I think bringing them, you know, if a person's acting suspicious, they can bring them and actually pat them down if they believe that person has a weapon. But to stand out there and try to wand everybody in that large hallway, people are going to get by. So it's just, you know, being here, being that deterrent, having the security, you know, present. I can tell you personally that I believe that instead of an outside security, because we don't know what kind of training, you know, I know what kind of training my officers go through. That's why I'm a lot more comfortable in in having them, you know, step in, so.
So when you say step in, do you mean being in the court?
Yeah. And, you know, when you brought up, and I talked to the city manager and, you know, working some things out on, you know, maybe, you know, instead of trying to pull from the road, you know, having someone in there, it would be, for me, I'd rather have a traffic officer, you know, adding a traffic officer where they can come in, part of their duties would be courtroom security.
Yeah, Chief and I talked about it, and I think we're ready and able to start having or providing the court with a, an off-duty officer on a regular basis, probably for the mayor this year. And we'd also like to look at, do some more research on the cost of some of the private companies and also possibly the cost of adding an officer for next year. We'd like to take a look at that and then come back and make a recommendation to counsel.
Any other questions? Kim?
How many times have the police actually been called in here? And how, what's the longest response time?
Well, it, it, see, that's hard to tell. We've had several situations where it came over and ended up arresting people and that kind of stuff. I don't have that information, an exact number. But depending if there's an officer in the building, we're, you know, a lot of times we're working minimum staff and there's no one over there. You know, it's pretty, you know, it's pretty bad when, you know, the Chief has to come over, and I've done that before. So, you know, where I'm standing by waiting for someone else, but I think I'm a last resort if, you know, we can get over here. So it's just being timely. And if something happens, I think that's the biggest thing. But I have to get, I would have to go back and check my numbers and I know sometimes we come over, we're not always available. That's why I think it's important that if we're going to have security, that they're here all the time and that's their main priority is the courtroom.
And then my other comment is I think if it's five days a week, I don't think we need to hire another person until we get to the point where your officers aren't willing to take over time. I think right now, most of them, well, a few of them would be happy to sit in here for a day. Is, I think that would cost more cost-effective than hiring someone or hiring an outside firm. And this helps our employees a little bit. So if we go that route, I think that would be a better way to do it.
Okay.
You know, and I think that's what we plan on doing this year, is making sure, you know, it's an off-duty amount. My only concern is if we get to the, it's not guaranteed, you know, to fill that spot. So if it goes unfilled, then I'm going to have to scramble, try to get someone off the road to do that. So I hear what you're saying, I have some ideas and, and I, you know, Mr. Pick and I will sit down and we'll bring up a proposal to you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say that I totally support you guys, whatever way you need to handle it, because I think we've been behind the times, you guys all know that we've been behind on security in this area. And I would go for the metal detector and wand too. I wish it worked in this building, you're saying it doesn't, but I wish, I would feel safer. I mean, she would feel much safer.
I'm a hundred percent behind that too, Chief. I think that we need to.
It would be a very expensive retro, I think.
I'd rather pay money than, than, you know, a gun somehow getting involved in here. And then, I, you know, I know that you said that if somebody's suspicious that we can pat them down, but I think we run the risk too of, of, you know, pulling people out and, and, you know, maybe putting off the wrong impression of, of, you know, choosing, you know.
If we had to wand everybody that showed up for court, one officer would not do it. You would need multiple.
I think, that's not my personal thing, I don't, and Judge, maybe you can talk about it a little bit. I don't know, I think the police officer's an important aspect, but, you know, how do we prevent weapons from coming into the courtroom? And I know that we have difficulties with this building, but I'm looking at all these other cities and, you know, they're having a hole, so I'm wondering if they go hand-in-hand with me.
Did you want to?
Yeah, I guess, ideally, it would be, it would be ideal to have, and so I think we're, we have this building, the sort of the city council chambers that we use as a courtroom, and obviously, I would, it would be great to have it, that we could have that. But I think we're balancing what can we do in the short term and then maybe we can work towards it as well. But I agree with you, I think, you know, it does worry me, you know, when I'm sitting up there, it's not, and like I said, it's not my risk, because I'm sort of separated from everyone. It's the people in the courtroom, it's my staff that sits right here. And so we're constantly trying to watch, you know, is this person looking a little shady? The police officer have been great to come kind of forward up and be near someone if they're, they look upset or if they're kind of arguing with the clerk or something. So that's helped a lot, I think, just for our peace of mind of someone being able to react. But you're right, it's not ideal unless we have something to scan everyone for a weapon.
Is there a mobile, have you heard of like a mobile metal detector that they can bring in for court sessions and have them go through it? Or, I mean, I think that that's just something I'd really like to work into.
I agree with that. It could be something that you can just walk through and.
But there still has to be an officer and/or, you know, someone there, you know?
Yeah, definitely, but it just seems like there must be something out there that would work in here.
But you know, and I've often thought, I mean, as a council member, for years, I've often thought, when I look at the rest of the cities, that we have a lot of disgruntled folks that come in, you know, and they're very unhappy about different things. And when they speak to us about, you know, different issues, I've often wondered why we didn't have something, you know, to protect us as a council. Because people do get irate and very emotional and upset, and you know that, you know, so.
I'm just trying to think in the last three years, how many people we've had that have gone to our meeting.
Well, I know, but in the past, but I mean, if you put one in, I wouldn't want it mobile. I would want it to be utilized, you know, all the time. But I understand the idea of, you know, possibly looking at long range rather than short range, but I think we need to look at all the options and see, because I totally support what you're saying, you know, and I think it's very, it's needed and we need to do it, so.
If there's a consensus on the part of council, what we can do is we can look at, you know, get a security expert in here and look at how we can retrofit the entrance to this room for a metal detector and talk about wand-ing. If there's a consensus on the part of council to do that.
I know in the hallway, because I've dropped by a few times and just kind of sat in the back, and the way they have it corded off in the hallway, you know, when folks come in to go pay their fines and different things, it's very, very difficult to even get through when the people are standing in line. So there's a lot of issues around that, you know, so I think we're going to have to really look into it, you know, see what can be done.
Is there a consensus on the part of council?
Go ahead, tell me.
I'm just saying that, you know, that, you know, when we get to that point, the new building will definitely have, you know, that in there for the courts. I mean, that's going to be, I mean, that was one of my priorities from the beginning when we get there, that's going to be a no-brainer, it'll be built in.
I'm on board for the security, but I'm not on board for retrofitting and trying to bring in a unit. And I'm also concerned about the security, but I just keep thinking, all the more reason this is a bigger priority to decide and get moving with the building. So I'd rather see that we make a bigger effort in that direction, get the security and see how it's going. If we seem to have more people, because, you know, the consultant's going to be twenty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars, and there we go again. So it's just my take.
Yep, I agree with you.
I don't see the need for that equipment either. I mean, it's tough enough flying nowadays, I just don't see that kind of, that demonstrated need for that kind of equipment and costs and personnel, because it's going to take more than one if you're going to be collecting keys and everything else in order to get in. And you certainly don't want to have that running during a council meeting.
Oh, well, you know, I just threw that out, but I mean.
I beg to differ, Mayor. I think that, that, you know, obviously there's been a need, there, you know, this isn't the first time that something's happened with the court, a threat's, you know, been put out there. And I'm all for the police officer being in here, but if somebody's able to get a gun into the courtroom, I mean, there's still going to be damage that can happen, you know, even if a police officer's in here. And so I don't care about airports and I don't care what we have to go through at airports, I care about the safety of our citizens and the safety of our employees here in the city. And whatever we have to do to make this the safest place possible, I'm all for.
After forty years, we have a crisis.
Because people are crazy nowadays and they go off at the slightest little thing. It's not the same world we're living in anymore.
I was going to ask about how Cohen, you know, how was it with Judge Cohen?
I mean, we would get calls, but, I mean, he would know, if we had a case that we knew, and I can tell you, you know, that was just, you know, the one case where the threats, but we had another case just recently too that involved a pretty bad person that's actually locked up right now and they're working a deal out federally that we're destroying his dog and he's not going to be, you know, pretty happy about it. And there's already, you know, some, you know, problems with that individual. So I get it, you know, and a case with Cohen, just to answer your question, he would call us, say, hey, you know, I think this case is going, and so we made sure we had not one, but several officers, you know, that would be here. It's just that, like I said, in this building, it's very difficult. There's nowhere to go. I mean, when you guys are sitting up there in council, when you're, you know, sitting up there, there's nowhere to go. I mean, if something happens, you're stuck right where you're at. And.
Well, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, just a couple of weeks ago, a guy walked into a Denver Police Department station, you know, with an AR-15, you know, and so that's the police station, you know, and so it can happen, you know. And I look at these cities, you know, there's multiple cities that we were provided that are already doing this, and so it's obviously a big deal.
No, it's important to have, you know, the security and the safety. I mean, across the country, you hear of shootings within council chambers, you see shootings within the courts. So it is, it happens, it's, you know, it's not a fluke. We just want to make sure that it doesn't happen on our watch and we take the precautions we can to make sure it doesn't. And I think with an officer present, that's a good deterrent.
That's true. Just a weird question for you. How, what kind of plastic guns, you know, people that can manufacture their own plastic guns, what kind of prevalence is that in today's environment? That wouldn't be picked up on a detector?
That's very rare.
Is it like so rare that that's not even a concern? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. But to tag along with that, I just heard a broadcast just today about that's not detected. You know, a plastic gun or those 3D guns that they build, they do not pick up in the detector, the metal detectors, they don't pick up. Right. So I mean, there's lots of things that could be brought in that wouldn't be picked up with a wand or anything, but I just wonder how prevalent this would be.
And I just wanted to say, you know, there's, your comment after forty years, now there's a crisis. The thing is, is now I feel like the court is my responsibility and we haven't had, we haven't had an incident. And the only time then that we're going to look back and say, gosh, we should have done something, was after that person. And so that's why, you know, I'm coming to you all now. I don't feel like, gosh, I can't go into the court, I'm too afraid to do my job. It's not that situation, it's that before something happens, we need to make a plan because we can't, we can't plan for the irrational response if we don't have anything.
I'm not speaking in an opposition to having an officer, you know, whatsoever. I just want to know what the history was.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I think I heard you say that it has happened in the past, but the police department did take care of it, you know, and I'd be kind of curious, but, because we deal with the courts quite a bit through the VALE program and so forth, and have not heard about that, you know, so that's a different part of our whole process too, so.
Can I just have one more question, Mayor? And this is for the judge, and so it sounds like the threats were more of a personal attack on you and the whole Tom Clements.
Oh, he, well, he talked to the court supervisor, Tammy Sutton, and made that threat to her verbally and then wrote it down and then submitted it to the court. So, you know, it was sort of a general, you don't know if he made it personally to Tammy Sutton and then he made a threat to me, I feel like. So it's not just towards me, I felt like it was to the court. It wasn't something, you know, he was yelling out in court, like, I'm going to get you, but he had told her and then said to say, you know, I want you and the judge to know, whatever you take from me, I'll take from you. So at that point then, staff is at risk and I know that they did not sign up for that.
And I can tell you, just on that individual, we reached out to the community that he lived in and they knew, and they ended up activating their SWAT team to get him. So, you know, they knew he was a concern also, and they took that type of precaution and bringing their special weapons and tactics team to arrest him.
I mean, you all know, anybody can walk in and out those glass doors all the time. You don't check anybody that comes in here and you guys deal with them all the time up at the front window and, and so I'm not asking to hire a twenty-five thousand consultant because I think sometimes we overdo it and there's got to be somebody out there, some other kind of consultant that costs a lot less, some security expert, who knows? Maybe there's something used that we utilize in the meantime before we get this new PD courthouse. But, I mean, do something proactive to try and get some type of metal detector. I don't know. I don't know what it costs, I have no idea.
I know I talked to the judge in Arvada, they did a risk assessment through their city. They had their risk team, people, and they kind of did different scenarios in the courtroom to try and figure out what the response time would be. I could reach out to them, but I don't think that they hired a consultant. I think they had someone that was familiar with security in the police force and then did various scenarios to see if they were.
Yeah, I'm not talking about necessarily a consultant, I'm talking about perhaps a manufacturer of, or a provider, a vendor of security or metal detectors who could come in and take a look at the physical setup that we have here and could give us some advice about what would need to be done and how much it would cost. I mean, I'm not talking about twenty, that's not, that's not what I'm talking about at all, just, but on the other hand, but on the other hand, it is not as simple as taking one of those metal detectors and sticking it in the door. You know, that's, that's, that's important. And the other thing is, it does take at least two officers to man one of those things. So, I mean, there's other, there's other things that need to be taken into consideration as well.
And we're just saying, we'll hire an officer until we get the new place built and that's going to be sufficient.
Kim?
The other thing with the metal detector and everything, we don't have to rig up just this entrance, because people can get in upstairs as well. So it's both entrances and the other thing is that if we're going to have it, I think it's important that we do it right. And if it's for our employees, then it's for all employees of the city, not just the court employees. I think if we're going to be worried about employees, we need to worry about everybody and not just one group, because we get angry people at all of our locations, people are always mad, that's just the way things are. They're mad when they have to pay their water bill, they're mad when they have to pay their trash, they're mad when the building department tells them they can't do something. But they can get in upstairs during the day. So I think if we're going to do one, it would be, I think silly of us to only do one entrance and not both entrances if we do go that route in this building. But I'm more inclined to go with RC and it does add an extra little layer that we need to be looking at the complex that we've been talking about, get that going.
Right.
But we do have multiple entrances into the facility and even this door, I mean, so it's not just one set of doors.
Right, that's right, that's right. Okay. Any other questions? Well, I, I think I hear a consensus that we want to move forward. And I personally, I kind of like the idea of looking at the security, you know, maybe an officer or two. I'll let the Chief and.
Our plan, the Chief and I talked about it, and our plan would be to start immediately to put the police officer back in the courtroom on off-duty and at the forty-eight dollar an hour rate. And then, and then, like I said, we can take a look at some of these other things, cost of private company and all that kind of stuff, and come back to counsel.
I mean, because we have in-house too, I mean, we've got Doug that has retrofitted this city hall so many times that he knows it inside and out. And I can say years ago, and I can't remember, but it was in the nineties, where we did have the upstairs actually built around so that no one could get into city hall. And then there was a councilperson that was a little disgruntled by it, and we won't go into that, but anyway, so then it, they redesigned it and put it the way it is now. So it wouldn't take much to do that, is what I'm saying. All right.
Well, thank you all for your responses.
Okay. All right. All right, next. John, you have construction-related noise regulations.
Yes. Well, when SunCor was installing the oil pipeline along the railroad right-of-way, we received a number of complaints, particularly from Fox Run, about the noise that was being generated. And we thought that we had had that covered when we issued the right-of-way permit from SunCor and said that they couldn't work after seven o'clock. That right-of-way permit only applied to the easement area that we gave them, or the easement we had given, did not apply to the railroad right-of-way itself. That area was covered by our noise ordinance, which allows for construction activities up to ten o'clock at night. And so what we're proposing as a way of addressing this is to, is to change that so that instead of construction being allowed up to ten o'clock at night, it would be, it had to stop at seven o'clock in the evening. There would be some, some exceptions which could be granted by myself or designee, but first kind of a neutral circumstances, but, but basically the idea is we would hopefully, hopefully we would be able to address that issue by changing the ordinance.
Okay. Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm really for this, it's the only question I have, is that I-25, most of their construction is happening at night and late, late, late into the night. And I'm assuming that's in the attention because less traffic. Would that be kind of one of those granted exceptions?
Yeah, because, and I think I mentioned, one of the specific instances that we could anticipate here is that they're going to be putting a bridge over Hundred Twentieth for fast tracks, and at some point along the way, they may need to do a lot of construction work while they're putting that bridge on. So that would be an example. I-25 construction work probably, and it may be the same thing with Hundred Twelfth as well, when we get that project underway.
Okay. Any other questions?
So what's the penalty if someone continues to work or does work past the hours?
Okay. Yeah, in the, in the ordinance, there's, the violation would be, it's a violation of the nuisance ordinance.
What does that entail though?
It's a misdemeanor, I don't know the answer to that question exactly.
Right, that's the one. So say when it happened like seven nights in a row, I mean, the one night was twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, well, I mean, this would be immediately, I mean, if, if somebody's working past seven o'clock, if we get a call, we could send somebody out there and it's like.
He's guilty of a misdemeanor, any nuisance, I don't know what that means though, that, you know.
So would you shut him down then?
I mean, if you're doing a life of a thousand dollar job, does a misdemeanor matter? You know, is it better to get the work done and get the misdemeanor, move on? I don't know.
The penalty is that stated for all violations of the municipal code?
And is it seven days a week as well?
And we just increased all those, if you remember, the dollar amount and everything.
Yeah, I don't remember how much it is exactly, but it would be, every day, if they're out there one day, you hit them with a fine, you can come back the next day if they're out there again, hit them with another one. And I mean, at some point along the way, you might be talking, this gets into Corry territory, you know, you might be talking about an injunction or something like that if they're continuing to violate. I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a very common problem.
I don't, especially in our town.
But, but we certainly did have the problem with SunCor.
Yeah, and there was no way to stop, I mean, they, they knew what they were doing.
And with fast tracks coming through here, they're going to start, right now they're just cleaning tracks and debris and that type of, but it could have.
They were out the next twenty-four hours, running their equipment twenty-four hours on the two on the tracks.
Right. Is this seven days a week and is there, was there a lot of complaints about, you know, hitting on Sundays and Saturdays and stuff too?
This, this ordinance would be seven days a week. I mean, this, this ordinance applies seven days a week. It's not, there's a difference in weekends or anything like that.
And I get it, if there's something that had to be done, there's, I mean, you have the right to look at that, but if we're just going out and making, making noise, or, or I, more than the noise, this doesn't relate to spotlight city that lights up the whole thing like a town, you know, I mean, it's like the sun, sun shining out, oh, well, it is, the sun, I mean, it's pretty bright out there because they have to work. So they got these towers everywhere and it's lights up the whole place, so where you, typically got these towers everywhere and it's lights up the whole place, so, where you, typically in your yard, or even in your house, or in your living bedroom, and it was dark, it's not anymore, you know, so, this doesn't address that, does it?
This, this only addresses noise. However, it says you can't, you know, you can't-
That's the, the nuisance.
No person shall operate or cause to be, cause to be used or operated any equipment used in construction activity. So, you know, they got to shut down the equipment.
That would cover it, yeah?
It should, it should.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I've got a lot of problems with this, that I, and I think you would all agree on it, but Cory's not here. I mean, this covers every zoning district now, and it covers you when you're home, when you're out doing things in your yard or anything else, that, I mean, and it does not once mention noise in the changes here, it's simply, if you do, if you are equipping a building or altering your building, anything that you might be doing at home, you know, you'll be in violation if you're doing it after 7:00. It's not, and, you know, we do have commercial and industrial area, it doesn't exempt them in any way, shape, or form, and we've got manufacturing or whatever's going on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they're going to get hit by this. Also, there's the emergency provision, if something bad happens, you can issue a permit. Other than that, even utility companies now have been included in this without exception, which means if we get any wonderful activities going on that require public service or mob bail at night, you're not going to give them a permit, and they're not going to go out and do the work, because it's prohibited. There's no exception. There's a lot of problems with this thing, and I want to talk to Cory about it.
Well, maybe, maybe we bring this back again with Cory's comments, maybe you can-
Is Cory the one that- That helped you with this, though, John?
Yeah, Cory did, after it.
So.
I wonder if he patterned it after another type of-
My guess is that he probably did, because you could see it wasn't simply-
And you notice that if somebody's doing work after, doing, you know, by definition of construction activity, any person who's, you know, at the bottom caused to be used, operated any equipment, that could be quiet equipment.
Where are you reading this at, Jim?
At the bottom of the section two. You know, that could be quiet equipment, and it, remember, this applies to homeowners as well. You can't do anything after 7:00. And there's no differentiation between winter and summer, no differentiation between week or weekend, and it applies to you when you go home.
I think, I think that the answer lies, a lot to your question, a lot of it lies in the fact that this is a part of the nuisance ordinance, and the nuisance ordinance applies to noise. So, therefore, if you're, if somebody's out there doing something, using a piece of equipment, and let's say somebody in a hole, you know, it's not, it's not generating a lot of noise, or it's inside, like a manufacturing type thing, manufacturing is not construction, but if it's, then any, if, as long as it's not creating noise or creating an issue, then they would be able to-
But I understand what Jean is saying. I mean, if, if myself as a homeowner was deciding to saw wood in the backyard at 8:00 in the evening, they could be cited, they could be, you know, for that, so I do get that.
And I agree that putting a fence up, and then you're going past whatever in front of it to get it done.
Right.
I mean, I get all that, but also, we don't want to go through what we just did.
No, no, but so I think we need to answer these questions.
Somehow it's got to be a way to fix, I mean, and with RGD coming in, there's no way we can, I mean-
Yeah, because it's going to happen.
Yeah. So, ideally, Gene, what would you like to see, something split up between maybe more of a commercial-type noise and a residential-type noise ordinance?
I'm not suggesting anything.
Well, I'm just asking what you'd like to see.
I'm just saying this is a very poorly-written ordinance. It's got a lot of defects in it, and I wanted to talk to Cory about it.
Okay.
I mean, right now, if you have emergencies, you can take care of them, but under this, you can't, unless you get John to come down and write you a permit at night. And, you know, Cory eliminated public service and such. Utilities, if they have a problem at night, or, you know, and work's required after 7:00, they can't go out and do the work without violating the law. And your definition of noise is simply this in the code. It is, it disturbs a reasonable person, that's your sound level. Noise or disturbs a reasonable person, that's the level. It doesn't have, there's no decibels, just, your neighbor, get even.
And especially if you have issues with neighbors, and, so I think this needs to be addressed, all that we brought back.
Tell Cory I want to talk with you guys.
Okay. Anybody have any-
Me, too, I want to be there also, though.
So, maybe we bring Cory in, you know, if we can table this to another study session.
Yeah, I can let him know what some of the issues are and-
And just ask him to come.
Maybe it's just within five or two of the tracks, and I'm okay, and then you can get rid of it and put it back the way it was.
Okay?
Okay.
All right.
That's good.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? No? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.